The meeting is called to order. We welcome you all and Happy New Year. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Mayor Prokhem Donna Arp, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
Let us pray. Your humbly Father, I want to thank you for allowing us to gather together. I want to thank you for the rain that you sent that was so sorely needed. Pray that you will be with all of us over this next year when we'll be choosing new leadership for the location here, our city, all the way up through our whole nation. I pray that you will be with us and help us to choose the right people to run our government. I pray that you will be with us and that any business that comes before us, we'll conduct it in a Christlike manner. For it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
........................................................................
Our first order of business is not on your agenda. Tommy Sanderson is here. He is chairman of the Crime Prevention Board, and he's here to give us an update on their activities. Tommy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back in May of 99, the Crime Board had a workshop, and we went in and talked about our goals and stuff. We set a goal for 40 crime watches for this next fiscal year from May to May. As of December 6th, we hit our 43rd crime watch in this city. We're meeting again this month for another workshop to try to set goals for until May, since we already reached the ones. We're going to see if we can take it further. On the other hand, the Crime Board started a new unit in the city of Halton City called the Mobile Crime Watch. We had 12 people went through the training class, and as of December 30th, we hit the streets, patrolling the streets from around 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. until 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, driving your streets, patrolling around. We had a new city logo, magnets on the side of our vehicles, and the classes are open to citizens of the city. It's no cost to you. We'll have another class starting in the first week of February. So anybody that's interested, you can contact the PD, and they'll tell you how to get in touch with us. I want to thank the City Council for all their support and going through all these crime watches and stuff with us, and especially the mayor for coming out cooking at some of them. Thank y'all.
Thank you, darling. Item number one, Sherlene Martin, are you here this evening? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sherlene Martin. I live at 5318 White Creek Drive in Halton City. My question is, and if any of you can answer it, why isn't there a law that states no animal can ride in the back of an open -- the back of a vehicle, not secured? The other day, I was riding to work. 6:00 in the morning, I see a dog being splattered all over the freeway. Why isn't there a law? I've called the Animal Control. I've called the SPCA of Dallas. I was told that no law is here in Texas. I want to know why. What is it can I do to get this law passed? What does it take? How many petitions? How many signatures? What do I need to do to get this going?
There is a possibility we could always create an ordinance. The problem that the Police Department has is that they don't know how they would ever enforce it. Plus, we have 121, and we have 820, and they just don't know how that they would be able to hold the line on that. I agree with you 100 percent. People that put their animals -- and there's a law against children, but they still do that.
And I see migrant workers too. But if I can start with a city, and the city can go to another, and pretty soon, it snowballs into all of Texas. This is what my goal is, to get all of Texas. How do we enforce it? I don't know. I have a cellphone. I could call 911, give them the license plate. I did not see the pickup, but I saw the dog. If I would have saw the pickup, that gentleman or whoever was in there, he would have had an earful. But it's a shame that there is no law passed. We need to have this enacted.
Councilmember Arp?
I was just going to suggest that we have our Animal Control Board look into this.
We could do that.
That's what they're for.
Any other discussion from council? I will pass this along to our Animal Control Board and ask them to take it up at this meeting. And if you will leave your name and address with our City Secretary, I'll see that you're invited to that meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Sherlene.
Thank you.
Our next is the presentation of the Neighborhood Decorating Contest Award winners. Joe Wright and Fran Byrne. Joe Wright is on our Beautification Board.
First of all, I would like to say how much we appreciate everyone out there that takes the time to decorate their homes. I don't think they realize how many visitors that brings Dry City each year. We have people from all over the metroplex that come to Halton City just to see our lights, and it's all because of what you do. We do appreciate it. So we have a few of our winners here tonight, and I'd like to -- as I call their names, would they please come up? In recognition of the Best Use of Theme category is Wayne Landers and his family.
Mr. Ms. Landers, how you do? Congratulations.
Thank you.
We appreciate your taking part in this.
Appreciate it.
And we had a good time, didn't we? Let me present your certificates.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you come back for just a minute, please, Mr. Landers, Ms. Landers? Fran wants a photo.
She's frowning. She doesn't want to do this.
Next on our list is Best Use of Lights, James Worrell and his family.
Will you come over here, please? We thank you very much for participating.
Thank you.
Our next is Best Use of Lights, Kenneth and Carol Lamar.
Hi, Dan. How are you?
Good.
This is the best opportunity to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is the best in your office. Great, thank you.
Third year in a row. Our next award is Most Creative for William and Deborah Flowers.
William? Deborah, hi. Hi there.
It's Jeremy.
Hi, Jeff.
Jeremy.
Jeremy, I'm sorry. You want to turn around and have your picture made with us? Okay, here, here we go. How's that?
Very good. Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next award is also Most Creative, Martin and Elodie Rush.
You have to see these folks home to believe it. I mean, it was just outstanding. Even their garage, they had a sheet. They had the garage door up, and they had a blue, like a blue sheet to represent the night with little twinkle stars behind it and a manger scene. It was just, it was awesome.
Congratulations. How are you? Thank you very much.
Our next is also Most Creative, Brenda Daniels.
Hi, Brenda. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
That concludes the winners that are present tonight. The rest of them will receive their certificate in the mail.
Thank you, Joe. The next item of business is the Consent Agenda. We are -- see if I can get this straight. We've had some changes here. We're pulling item number five, item number nine, and item number 11 for a separate vote. Item number 13 will be moved to the next agenda. So, let's see. Wait a minute, and we're adding item number 16 to the consent agenda. So right now, we will be voting on items number three, four, six, seven, and eight, 10, 12, and 16. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move for approval of the consent agenda with the removal of items five, nine, 11, 13, and the addition of item number 16.
Thank you. Councilmember Unby?
Just for a second.
Councilmember Markham?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. We'll go first to Agenda Item Number Five for a separate vote. Excuse me. We do have a speaker's request. Let me get to that first, if you would. Mr. Glenn Baker? Glenn, please state your name and address for the records.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Glenn Baker. I live at 304 Glen Drive in Hurst. I know y'all are tired of seeing me, but on item five regarding this zoning, I ask you to go back and look at the current zoning you have in place now. We are covered in C-2. Most of us are already in C-3 and changing us to a C-4 requirement. Pardon me. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. I think is going to a bit drastic measure. The definition is very clear in the current zoning book, and I think we should stay with that as opposed to amending that zoning, and I would appreciate your consideration on that.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Councilmember Hanselring?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I did at the previous council meeting, I will be standing for any discussion or voting on this particular agenda item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jennings?
Madam Mayor, last meeting we discussed this item, I voted no on this particular item strictly for the reason that I felt we might be opening our city up to litigation were we to pass this ordinance. I hate to say I told you so, but I was right. So based on that, I will have to vote against this item again tonight.
Councilmember Arp?
I just wanted to say that we had already decided in pre-council to talk about our -- I mean, item number 21 in executive session. I'm wondering if, since we're under lawsuit, that maybe we shouldn't also talk about this agenda item during executive session also.
Mr. Olson?
That's certainly acceptable if the council wishes to do. We can cover both agenda items at the same time. They do relate to each other.
What's the pleasure of the council? I'm saying yeses?
Yeah.
Okay. Then this will be moved to executive session, Agenda Item Number Five. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, and I do have a speaker's request. Mr. Mike Stone? Please state your name and address for the record, Mr. Stone.
Mike Stone, 4709 Fossil Drive. And I was hoping someone came up before me last year when the deal come up on the streets, offered my MasterCard to pay for my curb and gutter. And I thank you very much. I do have a nice street. Been condemned by the neighbors right and left, senior citizens, and because of the fact that they're being charged $1,200 to $2,000, such as I seen in the newspaper. I'm happy with it, but I'm not happy with the fact that I read a little bit further down the line that this scenario is going to change maybe a few months down the line. The next street behind me or the street ahead of me does not have to pay. Yes, I did put my money down, said, "I want it," and I thank you very much, all of you. But I don't think it's right with the people that lives in my area, the senior citizens of limited basis, that five months down here, those other streets do not have to pay. And we do pay our taxes and our school taxes. I understand that. But I know there's going to be a cutoff point. I mean, this is like this all through life. Okay? We do this at this point. Now we're going to change. But why should these people or us be condemned? I'll pay mine, but I understand their feelings too. And I do live on an old street, and it's very nice, but I understand. Is there some kind of medium that we can come up with to rationalize and make everything a little bit smoother for them? Or myself? You know? I'm young. I can still work. They're on a fixed budget. And I live next door to them here and there, and they say, "I seen you last year on the TV." Yes, it's nice, but I had to pay for it, and I don't like being condemned. Is there any kind of medium that can rationalize with the -- make it equal across the city for what work y'all are doing, make it a little bit easier?
Well, my first thought is that we haven't decided, first of all, that hasn't come up for a vote, as to if or when we can do that.
May I ask something?
Yes.
In the Star Telegram today?
Yes.
It said it was already more or less approved, you know, and it hasn't really been brought into the fact. And it's kind of like, okay, this is the way it is.
No, it has not been approved. It will be on a forthcoming agenda item.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't -- I'm sorry you feel -- I'm not sure I understand the use of your word "condemned." You feel like you've been condemned.
Because I stepped up and asked, and it wasn't a spectacle. Yes, I've had two edges and never had a curve to edge, okay? And I'm proud of my street. And if you'll drive down at Karoski, all of them, and it is really nice.
Yes.
Some people is really, just like what you said was going to happen, John. And they've done this, and they've done that. I mean, I've seen sprinkler systems, grass put out, the yards. Is this exactly what you said was going to happen? But these are some of the people that can afford to do that. I have people that live there that couldn't afford to do it. And it's kind of like this throw down to our side, like, well, you people wanted it. I've lived here all my life, one I had to pay for.
What do you think would be the proper time? If you use the example of five months, if we in five months decide to not have the citizens pay for the assessments, would eight months be okay or 12 months? What -- you know, I don't, I don't, there's no way we'll satisfy everybody.
My personal opinion, the people that's been there, like the Portwoods and stuff like that, I mean, they've lived there when the street wasn't a street. The ones that can afford our work, is able to access this, then I agree that we should be able to kind of help along there. We're paying our taxes, but there's some of them that's not able to. And to rationalize it out, we need to consider those people. As I told you one time before, they're the one that's made Halton City, okay? And we need to give them a little respect. They brought us up in this world and taught us what we need to do for a living and to have this, that, and the other. I'll take my burden of it, but some of them has already paid their burden and done as they should.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Arp?
I guess all I want to say was that we were having a tough decision deciding if we did do something, where the cutoff actually would be. And I think pretty much the contention is if we do stop doing the assessment, the only fair place to start would be on a brand-new street that we haven't even done engineering on yet. That's -- so it's something that's already been done. I mean, where do you stop when you start going backwards? That's our problem. We can't afford to go backwards. So basically, it will be on any brand-new street that will be done, and that will be sometime in the future.
Councilmember Keenanis?
Thank you. I thought that Councilmember Williams' item was first, but that's okay. I'd be glad to speak. I thought I'd noticed that, but I could be wrong.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. No, I appreciate the comments, and we debated the assessment policy about two years ago. My position then was to, was to, you know, cancel it. We were able to extend the interest rate, make it a little more reasonable for people. We started up about a couple of months ago, and it was delayed until after the election. It'll be up on the next agenda item. It should be on the next meeting after the election. And I -- you're concerned, you're not the only one who's forced that concern of how do we make it where those who've already paid can get equity of those who are yet to have their street done? And that is a problem, but I agree with Mr. Arp that there comes a point, we have to decide at what point we're going to choose a cutoff date or choose a cutoff place or whatever that may be in order to do equity to as many people as we can, at least in my opinion. So I hear your concern, and I do remember when you came in last time and just said, "Get your street fixed," and we've done that. And I appreciate your forthrightness in coming up right now, but it will, this will be addressed probably at the next council meeting, so I would invite you to attend to that.
Councilmember Williams, my apologies.
Oh, that's okay. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Stone for coming out, and he'd been here before. We don't get the opportunity to get to hear thank you very many times for things in the streets and stuff and whatnot. And like I said, my name came up a while ago, and I didn't think that was right before to pay for curbs and gutters, you know, when we have city taxes to do that. But at some point, we have to correct a wrong, and I feel like that's a wrong to have the citizens to pay that when they pay taxes. But I just can't say, you know, we're not going to do it. We couldn't go back all the way through the back through history of everyone that's paid the curb and gutter and give them their money back. It wouldn't be feasible. It'd be like taking a child and spanking it, and then finding out it was wrong. You can't take the spanking back. All we can tell you is we're sorry, but we do hope to get the wrong corrected, or my -- the rest of the council may not agree with me, but I want to try to get the curbs and gutters to where the city pays for them. When a new development's put in, the developer pays for it, and you pay taxes to the city, and I think, you know, we should furnish you that. I extend my apologies for you that you had to pay for it. The senior citizens you speak of, they don't really have to pay it right now. They don't have to pay a dime on it. We won't take their house away from them. And the city manager can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think interest goes on it as long as they, they don't have to make the payment, but the interest comes on. And then it's sometime when they're deceased and they leave the house to someone else, and that will have to be taken care of. That's no consolation that person is going to leave their house to their children, but it doesn't cause them a problem right now. It's just going to cause the children a problem when they go to sell the house. And my apologies to you, and I'm trying my best to get this corrected for you.
I have one thing I want to say.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, Mr. Stone. You'll need to come up front if you want to speak.
All I did say, I'm in cities, and I love the avenue street. It's a wonderful place.
Hey.
Mr. -- Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Stone, I too would like to thank you for your comments. Along the lines of what other councilmembers have said, it would be impossible to go back and retroactively reimburse people who have paid assessments in the past. Although, you know, that might be something we would like to do, it's impossible to do that. So the next best thing we can do is address what we perceive to be the problem at this point. You've brought up a very good point as far as our senior citizens go, and I would like to think that at the very least, when we start discussing this, that if all we can do is look after the interests of those people that are on fixed income, then maybe we can work out some type of an exemption at a certain age, our homeowner that's been there a certain amount of years. And this is all strictly in the discussion state at this time, a full exemption, a partial exemption. You know, we're going to have to talk about it, but it's ideas like this that we can get the ball rolling with, and we've all, as a group, we've decided that we want to look at this, and as Tom said, probably at our next council meeting, something will come up. So anyone out there in the audience tonight or watching on HCTV that is concerned about this, I would urge you to attend that next meeting, and if you have a solution or a problem that this is causing, certainly we'd like to hear from you. And we, again, we appreciate those of you that have been here tonight and have talked about this. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, gentlemen, we'll need a motion. Agenda Item Number Nine. Councilmember Jennings?
Madam Mayor, I've moved to approve Resolution R. 2000-001-14.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanselring?
Just for a second.
Councilmember Unby?
Yeah.
A motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Stone. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number 11, and I have a speaker's request on this agenda item also. Mr. Patino, will you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is John Seacatino, and I reside in 1901 Halton Road. Madam Mayor, members of this council, first of all, I want to thank the sponsor of this resolution, I think it's Mr. Tom Quinones. I don't know if this is correct or not. Exactly, I want to also thank State Representative from Galileo, Texas, Mr. Quayre. On this resolution, the only information that I have is what I read in the Star Telegram, and it's not quite in line with what I see in this resolution here that I got here. What I write here is that senior citizens can perform services in lieu of payment of property to taxes. This means that if the senior citizens work, come to work, accept a job with the city, that the taxes will be forgotten and be taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Because what I read on the Star Telegram, they were offering a minimum wage of $5.35. So which one is correct?
Minimum wage.
Minimum wage?
Yes, sir.
Good. I certainly think that State Representative Quayre had good intentions in mind to help the senior citizens, and so has Mr. Quinones. And we've been talking out here about senior citizens, about helping them and everything, and we know, God knows, that we have our chair of citizens here in Halton City. and we know, God knows, that we have our chair of citizens here in Holton City. My question is, all the disabled citizens, they're not even, if they're in wheelchairs or they're so sick they cannot work, are we going to leave them behind? But I don't think that this bill, as far as I know, has any provisions to deal with the senior citizens that are not able to work. Now, myself, I would probably volunteer to work in a parks and recreation, or even in heavy equipment, as a truck driver, a supervisor, whatever, based on my experience. It took me a lifetime to, to learn. But this bill doesn't, really does not impress me when they offer minimum wage. To me, if I'm offered a pay kind of equal to my knowledge or my experience or my abilities, then I wouldn't feel too bad. So really, when I saw that they were offering minimum wage of three, I mean, $5.35, that really did not impress me. To me, if I accept that type of wages, I'm going to have to give up my dignity, and I'm not prepared to do that, not for that kind of wages, but for any other kind of wages. So I've always said that if I had a penny for every ounce of pride that I have, I'd be a millionaire. So I'm not here to, to ask that you do not pass this resolution. I'm not here to say that you pass it. I just want to kind of get it off my chest. And I do thank you for the time allotted here.
Thank you, Mr. Patino. Councilmember Quinones?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I spoke with Mr. Patino about some of his concerns and, and just to assure him and the public that the state legislature puts pretty tight controls on what we can and can't do. And I would imagine that in the next session, someone will try to make an effort to include disabled as well as others as well, if the program seems to work. But it's a new one, it's a start, and any way we can find to reduce the burden on those who are not able to pay the taxes, and again, this only affects city taxes, we're not talking about school taxes, on those who are least able to pay it, or anybody else for that matter, I think is, is a good idea. So I appreciate your comments and understand your concerns, but we're, we're kind of tied by what the state law says as to what we can and cannot do. And I had asked the city manager and pre-council to kind of explain the program that's put together at this point, and if anyone has any questions, I'm sure he'll be able to answer those.
Let me see what Councilmember Art. Councilmember Art?
I was just going to, I was just going to list a few of the jobs that would be available, and the city manager's going to state it, though I'll wait and see.
Phil?
Thank you, Mayor. As people are probably reminded by some of the comments up to this point, the state legislature during their last session passed a law which allows local governments, including cities, to set up a program so that senior citizens over the age of 65, on their primary residence, on which they have a homestead exemption, can provide community service to the city in lieu of paying taxes. There are several specific provisions that govern that, and, and most of those provisions are, well, all of them in the program that's being considered this evening are tied directly to the requirements of the state law. Generally, the law requires that the senior citizen who's interested in the program and the city enter into a contractual agreement, which will specify things like the nature of the work to be done, how much, the number of hours that would be done, where it would be done, the completion date, those types of things. That particular contractual agreement has to be signed before the taxes are delinquent, which is February the first of any given year. And what that means is persons who might be interested in this program for the current tax year would need to contact us as quickly as possible so that we could get that agreement in place prior to February 1st of this year, so it would apply to the current year taxes. We have identified several types of jobs that might be available under this program, such as general assistance in the library, painting of fire hydrants, occasional fill-ins for clerical staff who might be taking a vacation, or, or also filling in where we have special projects, such as large bulk mailings, things of that nature. Also preparation of welcome packages that we give to new water customers, and also just general clerical duties that may come up, filing, that type of thing, and, and the finance and the municipal court areas. We have determined, based upon current minimum wage and the average amount of taxes that are owed by persons over 65 in town, after senior citizen exemptions are taken into account, that on average, somebody would have to work about 12 to 13 hours to, to pay off taxes, assuming they owe that average amount. And the resolution that the council is considering this evening would authorize up to 25 people to participate in this program in the current year. And I should point out to the council that my memorandum refers to the maximum number of hours per property of 100, and actually, the, the resolution indicates 20, so I did want to point out that discrepancy to you. And the 20 hours, which is in the resolution, was arrived at as being substantially more than that average of 12 and a half hours, but certainly, the council would have some discretion if you wanted to adjust that figure.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a general question. I know the city, if this passes tonight, will participate in this. I think it's a good thing for the senior citizens and anybody that would like to offer their time in lieu of their money. But just to give some framework to the taxes, the abhorrent property taxes that we as citizens, you know, pay, for, I guess the city property taxes are about 46, 46 or 47 cents per hundred. BISD school taxes are roughly $1.50 per hundred. So three-quarters of your property taxes that you pay in this town go to BISD, and roughly a quarter goes to the city. And I have a question. Is, is BISD also participating in this piece of legislation?
If they are, I'm not aware of it. I'm not sure what familiarity they have with the program at this point.
It might behoove us as a city, and maybe Councilmember Quinones would like to contact BISD, because that, that offers, the school district offers the greatest potential for savings for our, I guess, bang for the buck in terms of if you spend time to pay off your taxes. I would encourage us to contact BISD to see if they would be interested in participating.
Sure.
I don't know if I read this or dreamed it, but it seems to me you would have to be, have been a previous teacher in the school system in order to be eligible to do that, if they were to even adopt that.
That's my recollection that the opportunities in the school district are for teaching-type positions.
Yes. Councilmember Quinones?
Right, I was going to answer that as well and mention if we could bring that up next time. I'd be glad to make a motion whenever the time is ready.
I believe it's right.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion, we adopt the resolution as presented, in, in light of the fact that we are against some time constraints, will limit the program at this point, and, and ask that we adopt it as presented.
Councilmember Markham? I have a motion in a second. Gentlemen, please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. The next agenda item is a public hearing. 13 is, is pulled.
That number pulled.
Yeah, that wasn't pulled.
It was part of the consent.
Okay, go ahead.
We're on 14. Item 14 is a public hearing regarding a proposed rezoning case. Proposed rezoning would change the zoning on a piece of property from C3 Commercial District to P E or Plan Development District, with the specific intent in mind of developing 29 single-family residential lots. The location of the property is Legend Point Drive, which is at the southeast corner of North Beach Street and Legend Point Drive.
I now open this public hearing. Is the applicant present? If council has any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here wishes, wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak against this agenda item? If not, I'll close the public hearing and move to the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Quinones?
Thank you, Mayor. Based on our conversation in, in pre-council, I think some of us may have some questions for Mr. Romani, the applicant, regarding the development.
All right. Please state your name and address for the record.
Henry Romani, I live in Ules 1502, Albury Drive.
I just have one, I think expressed by others, is, at some point in the past, many of us have been understanding that this property along Beach Street, which is just north of Broadway, may eventually, at some point, be commercial. That was in the minds of many of the, of the council members for some time. Of course, your application is to make that residential. What is, do you see any, what is your position as regarding the viability of that as commercial property, or have you tried to market it as commercial property, and if so, what kind of efforts were made to do that?
Yes, sir. We, as you noticed, we put a sign, probably it's about two years now, a year and a half, two years, and we tried to market it as a commercial. Even, we decided to have it one-acre lot, and then we put sign to be divided as they needed. We got only two calls in a year and a half. We have not received any offer at all.
You know, what kind of, what were the types of businesses that were calling? Do you know?
Well, we had one gentleman call for convenience store, and then he changed his mind. And we had one for the body shop. He wants to open a body shop for the auto repair.
Now, if you were to proceed with the, and I think this is going as a plan, yeah, plan development, if you'd proceed with this, what timeframe are we looking at for completion of the project?
Well, as soon as get approval, our contractor is ready to move. Probably it's going to take us, if the weather permitting, probably about four months to finish.
Okay. All right, I had a question or so for Ms. Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell, you heard us talking in the back about the kinds of trees and whatever was going to be done back there. Do you have any recommendations regarding that, or our previous conversation back in the pre-council? And kind of explain to the public what, what's envisioned by this plan development.
Okay. As we talked about in the pre-council meeting, and as you can also see on the site plan, the applicant is proposing to dedicate a open space buffer strip which will be landscaped. The plan, landscape plan, shows it not only to be landscaped with live oak sporadically planted, but also some pampas grass. And we had gone with the recommendation of Parks and Rec, and I don't, it may have been a spur-of-the-moment type answer that we got from them, but when this went before the Planning and Zoning Commission, at that time, it wasn't, the landscape plan really wasn't discussed in a whole lot of detail. After the Planning and Zoning Commission made their recommendation, we did receive a phone call from a gentleman who is, is very well, well-tuned when it comes to landscaping, and he spoke to you all in the pre-council about possibly changing that from the pampas grass due to a couple of reasons. One is in the wintertime, when it gets dry, the possibility of, of fire. The other one is the danger if, if kids run into it or people run into it, getting cut from the leaves off of it. And he had made some recommendation of some other type of evergreen shrubs, such as the yopon trees, the dwarf yopon, the dwarf nandinas, the mondo grass, the Asian jasmine, and the Nellie Stevens holly. If you all do want to consider approving this and would like, and I have already spoken with the applicant on this, and the applicant is willing to work with us to come up with a landscape plan that would be suitable, we can do so.
Some other talk was made about treating the wooden fence that's going to be, the house is going to be back into Beach Street, and so there's going to be a fence along there. And what is your understanding about that fence, and who's going to maintain the fence?
The maintenance of the fence will, will be the property owner, just like it is in any subdivision, where your backyard backs up to the fence. The fence, unless it's stated that it's owned by the Homeowners Association, which I don't believe any of our fences or walls in this city have that provision in it, it is the property owner's responsibility to maintain that. The applicant did not propose doing pre-treated wood, and so you may want to talk to the applicant about that.
Okay. I will let, allow the council, if they have questions, I may have some more, Madam Mayor, but I defer to the other councilmen.
All right. Councilmember Art?
I guess I have a couple of questions. One of them is, while we're talking about the fence, I know one of the problems we had on the Stanley Keller side was that someone put in a cyclone-type fence. Is there some way that we can state that the homeowner can't change these wood fences? They have to be opaque?
Right, that's a, that's a good point that you bring up. The remainder of Legend Point is not a planned development district, it's a straight zoning district, and there are no fencing requirements at all in a straight zoning district. The reason we recommended that the applicant go with a planned development district was so that we could make sure that we did get the fence up along Beach Street. If somebody were to take down the wooden fence and put up cyclone fencing, they would be in violation of the planned development district and would be issued citations for being in violation of the site plan.
Okay, and then, well, from Legend Point all the way up to Stanley Keller, will that stay commercial? Because I know originally, it was planned to be commercial all the way down through there.
That is correct. The applicant is proposing to keep that as commercial.
Okay.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Karen, is the, the land that we were just discussing that is, that is proposed to be, remain commercial? What is that on the future land use plan? Is it commercial on the land use plan?
I'll need to go back and, and check if that's okay, and I can do that fairly quickly if you have any questions.
The landed question here, however, on the future land use plan is, is residential. Would that be correct?
Low-density residential, yes, sir.
If you would, I'd like to know about that other track.
Okay, I can go find out if you all have any questions for Mr. Romani.
Madam Mayor, I have one for Mr. Romani.
Please, go ahead.
We had just discussed the possibility of, of a treated wood fence. Will you be receptive to the idea of, of running treated wood down the entire back area of that?
Well, the post is going to be metal post, we don't put wood, and all the rounds are going to be treated.
Okay.
But as far as the, uh...
Okay, would you, would you be opposed to putting treated wood on the actual slats itself?
Well, we don't have any problem. After we install it, we can treat all of them. We have done it before. Then that's going to give us constant color on all of them, so it's not going to be in discoloration.
Okay.
Mr. Jennings, the answer to your question on this is that entire area is planned for low-density residential.
As we discussed in pre-council, that may be one of the tracks that we need to revisit at that point.
Any other questions of Ms. Mitchell or the applicant? Councilmember Hanselring?
Was you saying Stanley Keller all the way down, or where from?
Stanley Keller.
Okay, that's a problem then.
Councilmember Hanselring?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Regarding the emergency access drive, I'm just curious, that's been a real issue in the past in some developments. I'm just curious, what sort of landscaping and/or fencing, what's the configuration of the emergency access into the cul-de-sac off of Beach Street?
Right, the way that this is designed, it's actually not going to be part of their lot. It's not an easement. It's actually going to be right-of-way, it's going to be built to our specifications, and there will be signage there that states that it is emergency access easement, no parking on that. As far as landscaping, grasscrete, anything like that, that's not being proposed. The property owners can put their fence right up to that actual line.
Okay. Was there a gate there, Karen?
Yes, there is a, a gate.
Okay. I guess the, the one issue was the treatment, we've talked about it at length. The, the fencing along Beach Street, it's, when you talk about some park dedication, is that why you have recesses, and that's why there's inconsistency in the fence line along Beaches, because that's, part of that's parkland dedication?
No, this is not going towards parkland dedication. He's actually going to be paying us a fee in lieu of, due to the size of this. He did this mainly for aesthetics, so it didn't look like a straight shot. It looked like, added a little bit more feature to it by, by kind of going in in areas and making it straight in other areas.
A little more character to it.
Right.
Okay, so ahead. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Mr. Romani. On these homeowners that purchase these houses, will they, will they tie into that fence in the back, or will they drop a post right next to the fence? And when they want to put fences up in their own property?
They'll go tie to it.
They'll tie to the fence.
That's it. Any other questions from council for the applicant or for Ms. Mitchell? Then we've been, we're, we're ready for a motion on the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Hanselring?
I'd move that we approve zoning case ordinance 970-015-15. I'd move that we approve zoning case ordinance 970-015-15. With the addition of comments of staff approval on the, in lieu of landscaping, in lieu of the pampas grass, maybe some alternative might serve that better. And also, a post-installation treatment of the fence for just longevity sake. I'd like to add those two comments to the plan development.
One other question.
Councilmember Ken Yonas?
I would second the motion and add that Mr. Ramani, we've had dealings in the past on the other phase, and while he had a lot to work with, I think he's demonstrated capacity to do what he said he would do. And so, with that, I'm willing to second the motion.
Gentlemen, I have a motion and a second, and your lights didn't come on until, until we already had that, so we'll have to move on. I have a motion and a second, would you please register your vote?
Wait a minute, we don't vote until we have discussion. I want us to go talk some more.
Thank you, Councilmember Arp, for correcting. I have a motion and a second on hold.
That's right, that's the way things work, we still have...
Thank you for that information.
All right. It's okay, it's okay. No, what I was gonna say is, I would just like to make the comment that on Stanley Keller Drive, some of the people thought that they could drive into their backyard from Stanley Keller. I'd like to make sure that the people who buy homes along Beach Street will be informed that they cannot drive in and out through their backyards.
But part of PD is, there's not gonna be any penetration through that post. And we had this problem on other subdivisions too, and it's specified that nobody can penetrate. And like she says, there's gonna be violation of the PD. And then, that's your part to go tell them, don't do it.
Okay, okay. Then we close.
Uh, Councilmember Mayor?
Councilmember Hanselring?
Councilmember Mayor. Councilmember... We talked about not having a cyclone fence up there, can we add the verbiage to the site plan to specifically exclude any sort of see-through or opaque, or cyclone-type fence?
Just use the word opaque?
So you want to make sure that all the fencing internally, not that that's on beach, that's being proposed on beach, because that is already shown as wooden?
Okay.
But you're saying internally, you don't want any kind of cyclone?
No, 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 I just want to make sure what's facing beach isn't in any way, could be a cyclone.
That's covered, it has to be a wooden fence.
Okay. I don't amend my motion then.
Councilmember Williams?
I don't know how we would approach this, but I would like some way, and the people in this subdivision, when they purchase this property, not come up when we start to, there's some C3 just due north of there, when they build their homes there, not come up and say, "Well, I didn't know that was gonna be commercial." Right there on the edge of our house, I don't know how we would be able to let them know, or if there was any way. Because it will come up once that division is in there, and then someone applies to put something on the C3 north of there, they're gonna say, "Oh, well, we didn't know that was gonna be commercial."
Well, Phase Two and Phase One, folks that are purchasing house, they're already back into commercial, they know, and they never had any objection. I don't believe we are gonna change anything compared to Phase One and Phase Two. Entire west side of Phase One and Two is back to commercial, and it hasn't been any objection. And between this proposed residential and commercial, it's gonna be a street 50-foot right-of-way. I don't anticipate any problem.
And I don't want any problem either, when they come by, I want somebody come up and say, "Well, we don't want anything there, we thought all these were gonna be houses." I want them to know that that's a commercial area, and it's expected to be commercial property on a commercial area. Unless y'all come back and wanna change the, the third part.
Thanks.
The residential.
At this time, we don't have any plan to change the north side to residential.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ogbie?
The last thing I have for Senator Johnson, that's that Don and I were even looking at and evaluating the same situation. We have had a similar situation happen over here on Dillon Highway, where somebody else, when they did build it, they had commercial properties on next to the residential. And lo and behold, we've already had a couple of council meetings where we had to deal with that. Because now all of a sudden, I go, "We don't want a business there," and you said it was okay, we built your house. But at the same time, I told Don, I said, "It still should be market-driven," and we looked at it, because if on the horse side, if on the west side of the beach, they built houses over there, then when they come back, they wanna have zoned that to plan development or for housing anyway. I think we could take a look and see approach on that. Three to five years from now, we'll probably find out. And I wouldn't be here then, so...
That form of motion.
Any other discussion? Please register your vote. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. A Visitors and Citizens Forum is next, and we do have some speaker cards. Any issue that is brought before the council at this time cannot be debated or deliberated. You're simply, we can't take any formal action, you simply get to state your case so that we may hear you out. The first one I have is from, I'm sorry, I'm probably gonna ruin your name here, Solei Bangura.
Yes.
How did I do? Really bad?
Excellent.
Thank you. Please go to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Solei Bangura. I am a native of a small state along the west coast of Africa. I have resided in the city of Houghton here for the past 12 years now. I live on Spring Lake Parkway, 5301 Spring Lake Parkway, apartment 902. I live there with my son, I'm a single father, he's 12 years old. I'm presently employed at Coca-Cola, but I'm on a leave of absence, on a sick leave, so I'm a full-time student as well. I studied all night last night for a test this morning, and I came home from school while I was taking a nap, and my son came from school. He asked me, "Daddy, where did you park your car?" I said, "It's out there in front of the apartment." He said, "No, it's not there." And he woke me up, I went out there, and sure enough, all my two cars were towed, and I came home by two thirty. And this happened, my son told me, "You run about four." I went to the apartment complex, they explained to me, they said, "Well, you didn't come get the stickers we are giving to residents." Okay, and I told them, I asked them to show me the location where my cars are, they gave me a number, I called the number, and I asked them, "How much will it cost for me to get my cars out?" They said, "Well, each car will cost $102.06," and this is all within a space of less than two hours. I have one of the receipts here, I just gave it to you. In less than two hours, and the distance is less than five miles. You know, and I was very outraged. I don't know what to do, I was very upset. I calmed myself down, the first thing I thought was, I remember seeing something very similar on TV in Dallas, or something like that, and I said, "Well..." I came down to the police station, I wasn't able to talk to nobody, I work in the city here, I spoke to a client who told me to come through this procedure, you know, and I don't know whether my problem will fall within your jurisdiction, but either way it goes, I'm down on my knees, I'm kindly begging you to do something about this, because I'm out of $200 in less than two hours. And I've been residing in that apartment for the past seven years. They usually give notice, if for any reason something is wrong with your car, they put a notice there, remove your car within 24 hours, you know. And the newspaper man came to collect his money this afternoon, and I told him my checks are in the car, and they towed my car away. He said, "Okay." He probably, he saw them, the wrecker people, they were there with the apartment, they were going around, taking down which cars they were going to tow away. So which seems to be a calculated action, you know, and if we all live in the property, in the apartment complex, we're all family, we should treat each other very nice. This is not fair to me as a tenant. That's why I'm here, begging you to see what you can do to help me out.
I have your address, sir, and I'll have your telephone number, I'll be in touch.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker's request is from a Mr. Mark Gregory. Are you here, Mr. Gregory? Hi, Mr. Gregory. Would you go to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record?
My name is Mark Gregory, 3213 Harris Lane. I just wanted to thank you for the library, just the sliding doors and the carpet's really nice, and it's helpful to disabled people, and that's it, thanks.
What a nice thing, thank you so much for telling us. Our library board and our library director will be glad, very glad to hear that. Thank you. Our next speaker is a Mr. Chris Eklund. Chris, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Chris Eklund, I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace, and I wanted to comment on the computers. I like how, like the computer I have at home, it's really slow, and I can just go to the library and get on theirs, and it's a lot faster. So, that's what I wanted to comment on.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys can come real often, we like hearing from you. Our next speaker card is Wayne Iverson? No? Okay. Counselmember, excuse me, Citizen John Williams. Will you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is John Williams, I live at 4609 Biscayne in Houghton City, Texas. This may seem a little bit out of order, but what I'm gonna talk about's a little bit out of order. I wanna address the citizens of Houghton City. I'm speaking from this stand not as a city councilman, but just as a citizen. After sitting in that seat up there for nearly two years, I'm compelled to bring bad news. When honest people, such as the colleagues up there, work so hard and volunteer their time, which they get $20 a month, if anybody doesn't know, they get $10 per meeting, and that's volunteering their time, some of them working 20, 30, 40 hours a week on this council, and work very hard. And it's an insult to them or anybody to be personally attacked week after week while serving on this council. A person that's been not very handsome in school, you can expect children to make fun of other children, they don't know any better. You know, their parents should teach them better, but still, you have children in school that make fun of other children and ridicule them. They shouldn't have to go through that, and these members of this board should not have to go through the same. After receiving hate mail, letters, phone calls, taking potshots at your character, it leaves you wondering, well, myself or anybody on that board with even one served on the city, they grew in love. When your friends and fellow citizens tell you you're doing a good job, this eases the pain, but just for a short time, the pain comes back. I'm very thick-skinned, I just consider the source of the individuals doing this and try to go on doing the job that I've been elected to do. But the fun ends when they start doing it to your wife and your children. There's no call for it. My wife, my children, these people's spouses, husbands, wives, their children, they didn't run to be on that council, and they didn't run to be ridiculed. I received two postcards in the last 30 days. Both of them very derogatory, and the last one attacked not only myself, interrogating myself whether or not I'm an honest person or not, and also gone to go so far as to accuse my son of the same. My wife received a letter about a week ago, about a half a page of one of the cheap magazines you buy at the store, Globe or whatever it is, says you can lose 70 pounds in six weeks, gives a whole deal how you can do it. Somebody wrote it on top of this, says, "Vicki, you ought to try this, it might help you." It's very obvious who sent these letters and spreading the lies. I've been accused of being a liar, a fibber, but all these accusations come from behind a postage stamp. There's not a one of them that'll come up this palladium or anywhere and say anything to my face. They behind the hat skirt, a postage skirt, stamp, or whatever you call it. And I'm at the point to where I'm through with it. After speaking with the city manager, he tells me that this is politics, and when you're in politics, you're subject to this kind of behavior. Well, we as elected officials may be subject to it, but we don't have to put up with it. Therefore, I'm offering a cash reward for information leading to civil charges being charged against these individuals. I believe someone out there knows, and somebody out there will tell on them. And when it's brought to light to the citizens of Houghton City, I'll come right back up to the stand, and I'll let you know who they are, and I'll point them out, I'll point their parents out. I own commercial property in Houghton City, my son actively operates a family-built business there called Big John's Motor Company. This February, it's been there 20 years. Couple of past elected officials want the city to believe that this is the less honest way to make a living, but I'm proud of what I built, and I know why I built, and I know I did it without lying or fibbing or doing anything illegal. I did it with sweat and hard work. So I encourage you, the citizens of Houghton City, come out to our meetings, second and fourth Monday night, meet me, meet the people on this council, meet their families, and refuse to listen to the other people, and see that we're law-abiding citizens. And I'll continue to go back up there and do y'all a good job, and I enjoy doing this, and I love every one of you.
Our next agenda item is announcements and events, and I would like to take this opportunity while they're still here to thank Joe and Henry Wright for once again doing outstanding job in organizing the Christmas Neighborhood Decorating Contest, getting the buses here. As always, it was just great, thank you. And January 15th, as a reminder, is Election Day, so are there any other announcements from any other council members? Councilmember Arp?
You can remind them that there's still one day left to vote early, which is tomorrow, if you'd like to vote early.
Anything else, gentlemen?
While you're reminding that, go ahead and tell them the polls are gonna be open both ends of the town Saturday, 7 to 7.
Tell them what, John?
Turn it on, John.
I'm kinda bashful. The polls will be open Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Recreation Hall, for those that vote there, and for John D. Spicer out north of 820, for those that vote there. I encourage every person to go out and vote on this item, whether you wanna vote for it or against it, I want a large turnout for this vote, I wanna hear the voice of the citizens.
Here, here, thank you. Agenda item number 16.
We took care of that.
We took care of that.
I'm sorry, we did move it, I didn't mark it off. Just wanted to see if y'all were paying attention. Agenda item 17, this is regarding the current status of the municipal court and whether or not additional dockets will be authorized. Gentlemen, do you have questions for Judge Bino? He's standing by. Hello?
Hello.
You just wanna vote on it without asking him anything?
We just wanted to look at him.
Oh, okay, a Christmas tree. Councilmember Hanselring?
Well, I just was curious as the request, we don't have any information on it, so it'd be real interesting to check for some.
Thanks, sir.
Ms. Jenkins?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Ms. Jennings.
Thank you.
To kind of answer your question a little bit, what you have in front of you in a nutshell. The first page shows what kind of financial activity was helping, was occurring in the court. And the second page shows the actual physical activity, number of cases passing through the court and such.
I have some lights on, so I guess we have some questions now. Councilmember Canonis?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions. You've got four items listed. You mentioned one of the last items is the Marshal Office. You said you're going to put that off until later.
I wanted an opportunity to talk to the new chief. I didn't want to try and run anything past him before he got here. I thought he'd like an opportunity. I had previously discussed it with Assistant Chiefs Macon and Denny. But I don't want the new chief coming in now firmly being the 24th. I thought I'd talk with him first.
Okay. And I was looking at some of the information that was presented us that it's projected that possibly we may be having about almost $200,000 of additional revenue this year due to the court activity.
I think we're already 200 over where we were last year. That's an actual number. No, that's...
202?
No, no. We're, I think, by the fiscal year's end, it'll be closer to over $1 million.
I'm sorry, that's not what these figures indicate.
No? Well, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was adding warrants in with you. Am I incorrect?
Over the budget, it's a total of nearly $300,000.
Right. Over budget.
So for the current budget, it's $300,000?
Yes. At the end of September this year.
In terms of you... Okay, so that's funny we didn't figure we were going to have. Now, you mentioned that you are maybe seeking additional dockets. What do you have in mind? Do you have anything set yet, or is that something for later?
Well, we have, the last time, I think it was in June, I may be mistaken about the month. The council had given us additional dockets then. And we have not used all of them. We used about three-quarters of them so far. And we project that will run out the 1st of April or so. So I was wanting to get this taken care of before we run out, as I set my cases or schedule a month in advance. On February 1st, I'm going to set for March.
So we're not behind on anything? If I remember right, there was a memo you gave us that everything's caught up, and now we're just kind of running on what we should expect to run.
We're in real good shape. The difference really is just partly the number of citations being written just creates more labor. If you look on the second page, Section D, citations issued, you can see that in October, the officers were up 2,000 versus 1,500 tickets. In November, 1,900 versus 1,000. And in December, 1,700 versus 1,100 citations. It just creates more work on this end as well. But that's a positive thing.
As far as tonight, and you're asking us to authorize another civil personnel, is that right?
The court personnel, actually, that's coming by way of Pat and Bill's office, not through me. But I support that 100 percent. I think it's something we really need. The clerks have done a wonderful job in helping to get everything caught up. They put in a lot of overtime to do it. And I just think that it's at the point where the overtime would justify another person.
We did already okay that.
Yeah, that's true. We did do that. That's correct. You have one more item on here, the teen court scholarship fund. If I give you, I'll give you an opportunity to explain that to the public and to us as well.
Okay. Well, Leslie Como, our teen court coordinator, has done a wonderful job with the teenagers, getting them to volunteer and help run the teen court. For those of you that don't understand what teen court really is, it's an alternative means of punishment for citations. In other words, let's say we have a teenager who gets a traffic ticket for speeding. Rather than paying a $100 ticket, it might be more beneficial to curb this teenager's habits by having him do some community service. And we have teenagers who come in and they act as our jury sentencing purposes, listen to the facts of the case, and determine the number of community service hours that would be appropriate. But no one gets paid to do this. It's all volunteer. And our teen court coordinator tries to talk high school students in from Holton to come on over and participate, be the attorneys, and argue both sides of the case. While this person should get a higher number, and the other attorney argues why the person should get a lesser number of community service hours. But what happens is these kids, they'll spend a lot of their free time working on this to no benefit at all to them, other than that they want to help and they want to be involved. And what we're proposing to do is open a teen court scholarship fund. We're not asking the city to contribute any money, simply to open a bank account so that myself and our teen court coordinator can ask people to donate money so we can give these kids something back in return. A lot of these kids will spend a year or more of their time, you know, making Holton City a better place, and we want to return the favor. In addition to that, having the actual scholarship fund would give her a little more pull in the high school to maybe get some more volunteers, kids who maybe do want something in return.
I may have some more questions, but I'll defer to the others.
Are we doing all three? Somehow we got started on 17 and ended up on 18. How did that happen?
I guess that was my fault, Mayor. I was asking about his items, and they were broken down, so...
Okay. Let's move back and take 17 here. And I have three lights. Councilmember Jennings?
Judge Bino, my question would be, in the past, when we have awarded extra dockets, this was done on, for lack of a better word, kind of like a checking account, where we authorized 20 additional dockets for you used over a period of a certain amount of time. Is this what you're envisioning this time? And if so, how many dockets and what period of time are you looking for here?
Well, I'm open on the number you'd like to do. We, again, have only used about three-quarters of the one we had last time in six months. I'm just foreseeing that they're going to run out approximately April 1st. So I'm wanting to get this taken care of before they run out, rather than after. I would like to do the same number again. But if, that would give us probably till about this time next year if we did it the full number again. If you'd rather keep a check on things, you know, half that number would last us for about six months.
What was the original number? Was it 20?
20.
And how many have you used?
Well, we broke it into half-days. So 20 full days being 40 halves, and we used 30 halves, so we have about a half-day left.
Roughly five days left?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I believe that's all I'm going to have on 17. I do have some other questions as we get to the other items.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Art?
Well, I guess I have a question here on the second page. You've got item B here. You're using the abbreviation. It says ATT period.
That stands for... That's the attorney docket. That's the number of attorneys representing clients.
And what is the difference between a pre-trial and a court case?
It's just the attorney pre-trial as opposed to when a defendant comes into court on his own. At that time, he would either plead guilty or not guilty. And if he pleads guilty, we'd come to some conclusion. If not guilty, we'd set it for a trial at that time. It's essentially the same thing, but it's for the attorney who is representing a defendant. That number that you see is less in December versus November. It has no real bearing on the dollars coming into the court or the number... But it does have to do with cases being disposed of promptly. There's one attorney who represents a significant percentage of citations in Holton City. His name is James Mallory, and he was on vacation in December. So January will probably see the balance of those cases concluded.
And also down at the bottom, I see that failure to appear citations. There was quite a few of those issued in November.
If you recall, when we talked about it previously, at one time, I believe the warrants were running about two years behind. Yeah. Yeah, and when I first came on, it was approximately six months behind. And we should be caught up in March where the warrants are all on an even keel. But they get issued in batches. The important, the more precise number to look at is to how many people fail to appear in court for their given court date is the number, is, for example, in December '63 and October '45. Pretty low number as to the total of people who are supposed to show. So 1,600 represents several months' worth of people on old warrants. Some of these warrants are pretty aged. And that's where you have that higher number in August of last year as well compared to July and September.
Now, you said we'd be caught up in March, so how long before, you're going to wait before you start issuing failure to appear?
11 days.
11 days?
You get, the ticket says you have 11 days to appear or citation will issue, or failure to appear will issue, so... I expect we'll be pretty on top of it soon.
And I see that there's a lot more, citations been issued these last three months also.
I think if you look...
Which is D. 30 percent in October, 87 percent more from last year in November, and 51 percent more in December. Do you think that this would warrant some extra dockets?
I think more tickets just equal more dockets in the long run, yes. But I don't think, again, that's a bad thing for the city.
Councilmember Williams?
First of all, the increase in the tickets from last year to this year, do you have anything that attributes to that, or can you speculate on that?
Well, I've tried to talk to a lot of the officers personally and let them know that it does matter and it does count. I know they do, they also, in the last month, have gotten a new radar razor, radar detector. It's much more accurate and high-speed. Those tickets actually, they just started writing in December, but I don't have a significant impact going into the coming year.
Okay. Make the ladder...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Second part of the two-part question?
I didn't say a word.
I sat in a couple of your dockets. Was it the last December, 1st of January?
The end of December.
Were those added dockets? Were those normal dockets or...?
Those were added dockets. We had two dockets the last week of January, which were set specifically for kids who weren't going to school last spring. Through the summer, I had a lot of citations come to me that truant officers had written for failure to attend school. And I gave the kids an opportunity to clear up their situation. In other words, most of them came into court and had pled guilty. But I didn't want to necessarily find 17-year-olds, 18-year-olds, 14-year-olds dollars. I want them to go to school. So I told them I would reset their cases until December after the fall semester was over. And if at that time they came back with perfect attendance, I would let their tickets go for $0 as I thought that was in the best interest, you know, the interest being go to school. And if they didn't show, I wanted them to have a little incentive to go. I told them they could owe me $500, the maximum fine. And most of the kids, I'm happy to say, got their tickets dismissed. If you look at the second page, I think it's Section F, yeah, dismissals without $10 fee, that would be December '99, 427, up 57 percent. That would be most of them. But to answer your question, that was two of those dockets that we used, or more precisely, one docket. We have, again, half-day dockets. So one day of dockets was used for that purpose. And I've started setting cases again for next June for kids who are in the same predicament.
I wanted to comment on that because I did come up here, and I happened to be in the city hall when Judge Bino was having court, and I came in, sat in. I enjoyed it so much the first day that I came back the second day. And I think that the money that we spent for those extra dockets, you know, we may not have got a lot of money for the city, but Judge Bino has got the students in these high schools, in junior high schools, gave them a little incentive to go to school, started paying them to go to school. You know, if you go to school all year, you don't have to give us $500. It's woke up some of their eyes. And I overheard some of them in the back here, you know, "I'm not missing no more school." So if he can do that, and those dockets are doing something like that for the community, I'm all behind him on those.
Those were pretty hefty dockets as far as the number of kids on them, too.
I have spoken with the principal and a couple of other people associated with Holton High School. And one of the things that has kept Holton High from being a recognized school is the attendance. And it looks like that may soon not be the case. And a lot of that is due to you, Judge, and they're very grateful for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Markham?
Are we in line for a motion, Mayor?
Well, I have one more light on.
You have one more light on, okay.
Now I have two more lights on. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, let me apologize for not thinking of this earlier when I had the floor. But Judge Bino, we had talked about bond revocation hearings in the past, and I don't see anything on this information that you gave us that addresses that. Can you bring us up to speed on that, please?
It's a separate printout from this one, and I don't have it myself. But we have approximately 20-odd thousand dollars in cash, which was forfeited. People didn't come in and take care of their business. The clerks, and I guess Pat's office hasn't quite figured out how to print that yet.
That's one of the things Melissa used to do when she gets time to do it.
One of her many things that she has to do. But there's about $20,000 there. We had approximately $2,000 of bail bondsmen come in and pay off their people's warrant. Well, not warrants, but the bond, made good on the bonds, I should say. And we probably have, I can't even guess. How many do we have forfeited? Yeah. Yeah, it's probably about $50,000 that bail bondsmen currently owe the city that needs to be collected on. That's a separate issue from what I've done at this point. I've actually gone to court, gave them the opportunity to come in and clear it up. When they didn't show, judgment was entered against them. They had 20 days to contest it, and they haven't done it. So now it's really a matter of, I guess, handing it off to Wayne Olson's office and saying, "You've got a judgment. Please collect on it." And I don't know what that'll take for them. But we actually have in hand some 20-odd thousand dollars cash from the bond forfeitures.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Hansel?
Just a couple of quick questions for Judge Bino. I noticed that the number of persons choosing defensive driving is, we had eight in October, four in November, and two in December. Is that just something that people aren't taking advantage of? Or is that kind of a philosophy of the court?
A little of both. I've made it pretty easy for people to get probation at the window, at the clerk's office, without having to come to court. And I don't offer defensive driving at the window. I prefer to look at them on a case-by-case basis because I don't think it's fair for someone who's doing, for example, 80 miles, you know, 85 miles per hour on the freeway in a 60-mile zone to maybe get defensive driving while someone who has a lesser offense can't qualify for it. I prefer to look at them on a case-by-case basis. It is easy for them to get probation at the window, so they're taking advantage of that. I'll typically reserve defensive driving more as a punishment, as a condition of probation. For example, I have people come into court all the time and say, "Well, my speedometer was broken." And I said, "Well, you mean to tell me you don't know the difference between 50 and 30? Even if your speedometer's broken, maybe you need defensive driving school." So I prefer to use it that way.
Is the probation you're talking about, is that the deferred adjudication process?
Yes.
Okay, so that's... Well, if there was a motion, I'd be glad to second it.
All right. Councilmember Markham?
So moved.
Wait just a minute. Wait just a minute. Councilmember Owenby has his light on now.
I have reserved a right-hand spoke so I can be the second on this motion.
Okay, wait. No infighting here. Councilmember Jennings?
Well, we have moved, but it says additional dockets. Are we going to put a number on that?
What was the last one, 20?
20, and he said he would be receptive to 10.
20 would take us for probably a full year, if not a little longer. Half, that would be about six months.
Sounds good.
Might want to just state for the record what the cost per docket's going to be to the city. Is it $200 a docket?
200.
Okay.
10 dockets.
10 would be $1,200.
10 would be $2,000.
Excuse me.
It's your motion, Councilmember Markham.
Right. I move that we pass a 2,917 decision on dockets for the municipal court, 10 dockets at $200 per docket.
Thank you. I have a motion. And Councilmember Hensel, do you still, do you want to second that motion?
I would love to second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. And let's see, we have two lights on. Councilmember Jennings?
You must have turned me off.
Councilmember Canonis, did you want to turn yours off, too? You just did.
I did turn it off.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Now we're ready to vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Don't go away. We sort of, we heard your explanation of this. Let me see if council has any further questions on Agenda Item 19 regarding the teen court scholarship. 18. What's that? Councilmember Jennings?
I don't have any questions, but I would be in line for a motion if there are none.
Go right ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we initiate the teen court scholarship fund due to the fact that it will be at no cost to the city, and it is a very worthy cause.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
I'll shed a light, yes, while I go ahead from 17 to 18, move into that. That's what... into that, that's what you get when you get two attorneys talking to each other, that's for a second.
Yeah, thank you. I have a motion and a second, Councilmember Hanselring?
Yeah, I was for a second as well.
Councilmember Markham? Please register your vote, gentlemen. Motion passes unanimously. One more time. Agenda item number nineteen, about reimbursing the city for prisoner medical expenses, would you care to elaborate?
Yes. It hasn't happened frequently, but it's probably happened three times since last May that I've been elected, that we've had a prisoner who doesn't want to stay in our Halton City jail, so that's a surprise, but in order to get out, what he does is he keeps saying he has some sort of health problems, my stomach hurts, my head hurts, so they either call an ambulance or bring him over to the hospital, and turns out that there's nothing wrong. And they'll sit there and tell the jailers specifically, I'm gonna make you keep taking me to the hospital or calling an ambulance to make your day hell, because they know that there's no cost to them, and it's a way of just screwing with the jailers. Well, bottom line, state law, if I understand correctly, provides that other facilities, like county jails, for example, can charge their prisoners for the medical attention. I don't want to deny medical attention to anyone who needs it, that's not the point of this, and we don't even, it's not even to make money on people getting medical attention, it's to dissuade those few people who are causing a problem, letting them know in advance, we'll call the ambulance for you all day, but every time you call the ambulance, you're gonna get the bill. And if, for some reason, it provides that the city does have to pick up the bill, for whatever reason, just let them know, you're gonna have to take care of this, or you can effectively sit it out if you can't. So, it was probably about ten days ago, we had a guy who was just, probably once every two hours a cell, call me the ambulance, call me the ambulance, so we had to have a little talk with him about reimbursing the city, but I'd like to have something more formal, other than just threats, just to cover that. Again, I'm not suggesting at all that we withhold any treatment for anybody, and in fact, treatment is always given, because the city doesn't want to get sued, but again, I don't think the city should have to pay for people like that, who are just abusing the system.
Councilmember Williams?
I guess this would be for our attorney down there, is it legal for us to charge him for that, or can we, can we pick the ones we want to choose to charge, or?
Yes, and yes.
Then we should do that.
Yes, yes.
I'm ready for a motion whenever you're...
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question would also be for our attorney, would there be some type of ordinance that would need to be drafted up, or could we vote on this particular agenda item and accomplish the same thing?
If we want to look at drafting an ordinance, this is something that hasn't been discussed with me yet, but we'll look into the best way to provide for this, there are other issues involved here, and some of which involve where the prisoner is taken, there's a Texas constitutional provision regarding the county being responsible for prisoner medical care, and we can look at those issues also, where the prisoner should be taken, and if we are stuck with the bill, whether or not we can seek reimbursement from the prisoner.
Okay. Based on that information, if Councilmember Williams' motion encompasses that, then I would be in line to second.
All right, one moment, please. Councilmember Hanselring, up. Councilmember Williams, it's your motion.
I would like to send that to council then, and let them draft us an ordinance on that.
You want to send it to who?
To their, our staff, have them draft us an ordinance, bring it back, and I think we can help the prisoners get well quicker.
Councilmember Jennings?
I'd like to second that.
I have a motion and a second, please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
And I want to say, Judge Bino, just before you leave, I'd like your staff to know how much credit you're giving them for everything that's happening back in the court. He has publicly stated that he couldn't possibly do this without everybody's help, and so I just, in case you don't already know that, I just wanted you to know.
Well, thank you. I saw a letter, a newsletter that he sent out to the people in coffee city, and I have to say it's very encouraging to have a judge that is behind us the way he is.
I'm sure it is.
I just gotta help them look good, too, because they make me look good.
Thank you. Agenda item number twenty, as you heard previously, has been tabled, so we'll move on to, let's see, twenty-one has been moved, we'll move on to agenda item number twenty-two, library books for the homebound. Councilmember Williams put this on the agenda, so do you want to discuss it, or shall I give it to our library director?
It's gonna go to the library director in a moment.
Okay.
Kind of give him a little upbuilding before he did, the two students did pretty good a while ago, they stole my thunder. I'd like to invite the citizens of Halton City out to look at the new library, they've done a super job down there, the new carpet, the new paint, we've got a library director that's really enthusiastic about his work, and I talked to a couple of elderly ladies back during Thanksgiving, and we were discussing meal and wheels in the Lions Club, Greater Halton City Water Dogger Lions Club, helps out with the meals on wheels, and we come up with the idea that it would be nice that these people that we're having to take the food to that's homebound, that there's probably a need there, that they might enjoy some reading. And so I got with Bill Eisen, and got with Mr. Bland, and Mr. Bland's gonna tell you the program that we've come up with, but I think we got something that our meals on wheels can work together with, it'll cost the city a very minimal amount, and Mr. Bland has very, as a matter of fact, the employee of the year, Allison Long, is the girl that's gonna be the director of this, and he'll tell you what she plans on doing and what we plan on doing with this program.
Okay. Madam Mayor and council, after Councilman Williams contacted me, we, as a staff, sat down and decided how we could best handle this program, and I believe that with the volunteers from the Lions Club taking the meals out to the homebound, that our outreach assistant, Allison Long, would go out and visit each person with a request, and would do a profile, and from that profile, we would send the appropriate books to the home. We had a suggestion today that we take one of our portable computers out to the home, and they might be able to even look at what we have available at the library from their home. We'd have to work out the details of that with our automation people, but I think that this is within keeping with our mission in the city, to provide books to all of the people, and so I support this suggestion, and believe that it can be done within budget and with the staff that we currently have.
Questions, council? Councilmember Kianis?
Yes, I had just a couple, Rodney, mechanic, how would this work? I mean, how would, how do you envision or picture that this would actually operate? In terms of, say, you go out and you find out they want a book or two, they say, we want this particular book, or whatever, how does, how would it go from there?
The first thing would be that hopefully the Lions Club would promote it for us with their, the people to whom they deliver the meals, and then they would give us an initial contact, Allison Long would go out and interview the person, persons in the home, and would drop a profile, the types of books they like to read, interests, perhaps they like Christian fiction, or something along that line, she'd do a profile, and then we would suggest titles, and then we would take those books to a pickup point for the Lions Club to deliver with the meals, with a date card in it, and hopefully they would finish it by that time, and we would just keep changing in and out, with them contacting Allison when they wanted a new set of books. The Lions Club would just basically do like they do with the meals and deliver the goods.
Okay. And, and so you'll pick a pickup point, it'd be outside of the library, it'd be some other place, it'd be a location convenient for both, okay. And what would be, what do you estimate to be the impact financially, if any, on the budget?
We don't know right now. Allison's salary is already part of our regular budget, the books are commodities we already own, we'd have to use what we already own, or borrow from Fort Worth or one of our neighboring libraries, so I don't foresee any impact there. If the program gets, you know, just highly, highly successful, then I don't know what that impact would be in the future, I can't even see, which I would love to have that happen. I think we have a bunch of citizens out in the community that can use this.
Well, I agree with you there, I would always encourage reading, as much as I love to read, I can understand, appreciate that, so that's good, so it sounds like a worthy deal. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Also, when I said that Mr. Bland is very enthusiastic about this, I brought this forward to the Lions Club before I took it to Mr. Bland, and Jack Lucko, the president of the Greater Halton City Water Dogger Lions Club, a great people of in person, and he's excited for this to get started, and him and Rocky Rockefeller have both assured me that the Lions will take very good care of the books, they'll work with the library as far as transportation back and forth, and they're hoping that this will be a great success for the city and for the seniors.
Any other questions from council? We'd be in line for a motion. You know anybody who wants to make a motion? Councilmember Williams?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve this.
Councilmember Kianis?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number twenty-three, appointments or reappointments to boards or commissions, and I do think we have one or two. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is with great regret that I have to announce the resignation of Mr. Buddy Ferris from the Fire Services Board, due to health reasons. Also, I would like to thank Councilmember Arp for some help in locating a replacement for Mr. Ferris. I would like to nominate Harry Duboe of 4001 George Anne Drive for position one on the Fire Services Board.
Thank you. Councilmember Kianis? I'm sorry, Unby?
I know we all look alike. Tom and I figure each other heavily, we got... Anyway, I had it on, I was making sure the microphone's on. It's my great pleasure, even as early as this evening, to have finally got another appointment for the Charter Review Board, and with his pleasure and his request, Mr. David Hunt.
Very good. Any others, council? Then we'll just register your verification, please. Councilmember Mark, thank you, thank you. They're ratified, and our newly established Fire Services Board has their very first meeting next week, and I want to thank Councilmember Kianis for volunteering to be the liaison for the council, thank you. Agenda item number twenty-four, we're all here, so we don't have any excused absences. City council will now recess into executive session pursuant to section 551.071, according to the open meetings law of the state of Texas, and also section 551.072 for deliberation regarding real property at nine fifteen.